Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Town Council to order. And we're going to do things a little bit out of order today. I don't know if you noticed on the agenda, the first thing under the new business was the swearing in of Chief Foley. But that would entail about 10 or 15 minutes of going through reports. And we thought Chief Foley's sons would be okay, but he'd get too fidgety. So we're going to move it up a little bit. And the first thing on the agenda we're going to do is to swear in the chief. However, I would like to say a few words before we do that about our incredible police As you know, our police department has faced an incredible challenge this year. And when we first lost, when we first, the position first came open of chief and also captain, people on the outside were telling us to go outside and to find someone because it was best to feel from the outside. But thanks to the wisdom and the experience of our town manager Cliff Gravier, we decided otherwise. We decided we had the talent and the professionalism and the ability within the ranks of our own police department, and that was the best pool to go from. And so we did. We thought that they were the best pool because we've known so many of them since the time they were young college students, when they came here to be seasonal police officers. And you might not know, but our seasonal police officers go through a very strict training. And so we knew that they were well qualified. They also go to, when the officers come on, and we have many of them here who started as seasonals, they get training from the State Police Academy. And there they learn the core values of honesty, integrity, courage, loyalty, attitude, discipline, and service. And I think the police in our department exemplify that every day in the way they deal with people and in the way they go about their business. So what we did was, they went out, well, I'll just say this one other thing, too. We only have a few officers on our police department, but there are only 11 Delaware police departments that are certified, nationally certified, in the Kalia program. And that is a prestigious award that is given to the most professional departments that meet certain standards. We are the smallest department. We stand with the ranks of the Delaware State Police, the Newcastle County Police, the Delaware University, the State University Police, a lot of different police departments. And in the midst of all the turmoil this past winter, this town was due for another Kalia inspection for renewal. And despite all that was going on, our accreditation officer Sergeant Foley rose to the occasion, as did every officer in this department, and we did pass with flying colors. So I think that's a tribute to the people who are here today, our officers. And how they chose the officers, how we went about choosing the chief also was an exercise in a professional capacity. We have four professional police, not two police, one police chief and one retired police, and people who are involved professionally in law enforcement, who interviewed them, who went over their statements, who looked at their credentials and everything. And that is how we came up with the recommendation of Sergeant Foley to be the next police chief. And that was why the council, based on that, and also the recommendation from our town manager, went that way. But I'd also like to introduce you to these great men and women here who are part of our police department. And I see over there Amy Cresto, who was our civilian employee. We have Sergeant Riddle, Sergeant Elliott. We have Patrolman Lano and one of our newest here, Greg Contorno. Right here, we have our very newest, Brady Meredith, who had been a seasonal for a number of years. And next to him, we have Patrolman Molly Ryan, who won an award this past year for her service. And who's that? Sorry. Andrew Rogers. And then Sergeant Sharp and Corporal Jason.
Justin.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Justin.
Justin Norman. Thank you. You know, Jason isn't here. Justin Norman. Thank you. So anyway, let's give them a round of applause for all the great things they've done. This is a police department you can be proud of and don't let anyone tell you anything differently. Okay, right now, we're going to get to the show. And I'm going to invite, well, Chief Foley up here. And guess who got out of school today to swear, to pin the badge on? Come on up, Ryland. Megan, you want to come up, too?
Megan and Connor.
And Connor?
Your husband and father.
Yeah. This is a family affair. And Mr. and Mrs. Foley, would you like to stand here, too? If you can.
You're going to have to move this way here. Let me know, will you? Good? Okay.
Yeah.
You've got double duty here. You have to hold a Bible picture. Okay? So let's go to do this first, okay? Good? So we have with our future Chief Foley, his son Riley, his wife Megan, his younger son Connor, his father, and his mother, Ann and Bern. So if you will please, Sergeant Patrick Foley, repeat after me. I.
I, Patrick L. Foley.
Do hereby acknowledge.
Do hereby acknowledge.
That I have voluntarily entered service.
That I have voluntarily entered service.
With the Bethany Beach Police Department.
With the Bethany Beach Police Department.
As chief.
As chief.
On this 19th day of April, 2024.
On this 19th day of April, 2024.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That as long as I am employed by the Bethany Beach Police Department.
That as long as I am employed by the Bethany Beach Police Department.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the town of Bethany Beach.
To the town of Bethany Beach.
The state of Delaware.
The state of Delaware.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
That I will serve them honestly and faithfully.
I'll serve them honestly and faithfully.
Against all enemies whatsoever.
Against all enemies whatsoever.
That I will support the Constitution of the state of Delaware.
I'll support the Constitution of the state of Delaware.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And faithfully discharge all the duties.
And faithfully discharge all the duties.
Of chief.
Of chief.
Of the Bethany Beach Police Department.
Of the Bethany Beach Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
That I will obey the orders and directives of superiors.
That I will obey the orders and directives of superiors.
I further agree.
I further agree.
To submit to.
To submit to.
Any disciplinary action.
Any disciplinary action.
Imposed upon me.
Imposed upon me.
In accordance with the rules.
In accordance with the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the organization.
Of the organization.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Foley, you have comments?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Just one minute, Mr. Town Manager. Just try it all.
Mayor, council, town manager, residents, and guests, I'm very grateful, humbled, and honored to be appointed the 10th Chief of Police for the Bethany Beach Police Department. Our department consists of officers from Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. I believe that is an excellent representation of our town's population in a great way to relate with the community we serve. Apologies to all of you from Maryland and Virginia. You could expect a ticket on your car when you leave here today. To the department, the leadership that the agency has current day is a credit to the passion, drive, and friendships we have formed within our agency. Excuse me. Our goal is to sail this ship together with me as your leader in brighter skies and represent a professional image in our daily function while holding ourselves accountable to our actions. I love every one of you and cannot wait to start this next chapter for our agency. To my family, Mom, Dad, excuse me, you taught me early values about loyalty, passion, and drive. My father worked at the Boston Globe for 44 years as a pressman, and my mother drove a city school bus for over 30. If that is any indication of my family's work ethic and name, I will be in Bethany for the long haul. I'm grateful for your guidance and perspective while growing up, not only to the town of Bethany's name sewn in my uniform, I will represent our family name with honor, integrity, and professionalism. To my wife Megan, my kids Ryland and Connor, I'm even more grateful for your patience, much-needed distractions, and keeping me focused and grounded over the past three months. I look forward to this next chapter of our family and can't wait to see what the future holds. Thank you.
Chief, leave those people alone. Leave them alone.
Do you have to go back to work?
Yes, sir.
You did a great job.
Well, thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll call the regular meeting to order. And I note that all the members of the Town Council are here, Town Manager Cliff Gravier, Assistant Town Manager Terry Teeman, our Town Clerk Kristi Ray, and our IT Director Will Wharton. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item, approval of the special meeting minutes held on January 12, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Approval, thank you, of the special meeting minutes held on March 15, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the executive session held on March 15, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item is the approval of the financial report. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. This report covers the budget through March 31, 2024. We are 100% through the fiscal year 2024 and entering into 2025 as of April the 1st. We finished the fiscal year $998,000, more than we were budgeted, mainly due to a large number of transfer taxes and building permits. All forms of income were above budget, except the rental taxes. To date, we have collected 107.8% of the budget as compared to 111.8% this time last year. On the expense side, our expenses were under budget. We have expended 96.4% of our budget compared to 102% last year. Recognizing this report is subject to audit, I move that the council approve an unauthorized audit, a report, excuse me.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we're going to have a donation to the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company and Friends of the South Coastal Library. Chief Bracken is here today. Can you hear? Okay. Our volunteer fire company, EMS, are among the most selfless public servants you will find anywhere. Whenever that bell rings, they drop everything, and they come out to help people and to save lives. And we have with us today Chief Bracken, who will accept a donation on the part of, on behalf of the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company and EMS. But I just wanted to say their service area is 17 square miles. It goes from the Indian River Bridge down to the state line, Effemlik Island, over to the Route 54 Bridge, and out here to the Assawoman Bridge. So they cover quite a distance. And they have, within that area, we have about, I guess, 2,000, 3,000 permanent residents and about 30,000, 40,000 during the summer, something like that. It's an enormous amount. But they're in dire need of volunteers because we're getting fewer and fewer volunteers. The age of the population here is getting older, and most of the volunteers, most of the volunteers live further inland. So I put a plug in for them. They put out an annual fundraiser, and if you would be as generous as you possibly can with them, I would also ask you, too, there's legislation before the Delaware General Assembly that would allow each of the counties to put a fire tax or a fee on every property within the county. And right now, they're studying it, Sussex County is studying it. But I would ask you if you, it's something they really need. There's kind of mixed feelings on the part of some of the county representatives. So if you would write to your representative, whether it be Doug Hudson or whoever, and just let them know that you're in favor of this, they really need the support, and they need something that's more county-wide and even statewide. Yeah. So anyway, thank you very much, Chief Bracken. Can I hear a round of applause for the chief? And then we have Friends of the South Coastal Library. We have Barb Cawkins, who is the president, and we have Kathy Green, who is the vice president. Thank you. And you know, the Sussex County Library, the South Coastal Library is supported, the operation is supported by Sussex County. It's a county library. However, all the programs that are extra, all the events, all the children's programs, everything else is funded by the fundraising efforts of the Friends of the South Coastal Library. And so I'm going to give Barb and Kathy an opportunity to give you a plug for the Cottage Tour. The Cottage Tour is coming up in July. That's their big fundraiser, and a lot of people support that. It's very well supported. But I would also point out that Kathy just received the Governor's Award for Outstanding Volunteer Services this past week, and in part because of her many volunteer efforts throughout the county. She not only does, is the chair of the fundraiser for the Cottage Tour, but she also does a great job. She's on the board of the Justin House, Justin's Beach House, and also the South Coastal Village Volunteers. So she does that and many more things. So I would just, we give you this to help with out, and if you wanted to put in a plug for anybody?
Thank you. Our plug is always, we welcome candidates for our Board of Directors for the Friends of South Coastal Library. We depend on community participation and support. We have a lot of good ideas, and we need not only the funds for which we're so grateful and appreciative, this seeds our start of the tour, but participants. So the fire company, we would welcome your participation as well. Thank you so much for this.
Well, and I thank you all very much. The tour, we think, is a highlight of the summer here, and it definitely supports our library in many, many ways. And we need tons of volunteers, so come and see us if you can help us.
So the message is, if you're not fit enough to join the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company, please consider the Friends of the South Coastal Library. And now we go to reports. We have a report from the Non-Residential Design Review Committee. Mr. Shepley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, gathered guests. The Non-Residential Design and Review Committee met on April 5, 2024. We had four new applications for signs, requesting approval of new signs. Three of the applications were new businesses, and one was an existing business. The new businesses were The Lost Arts at 123 Garfield Parkway, Relish Decor at 100 Garfield Parkway, and Clove and Cedar at 759 Garfield Parkway. All these signs were approved. The one existing business that submitted an application was Sedona Restaurant down on Pennsylvania Avenue. They were not aware that they had to request approval and get that approval before they painted the blue signs that I'm sure everybody has seen. So they did a request for forgiveness rather than approval, which we certainly listened to. They had four signs. Two of them were approved. The sign on the front of the building is approved, as is the big sign on the side that faces Central was okay with changes. It's too large. They are going to paint gray to match the building on either side of the sign to bring it into compliance. And then the two other signs, two remaining signs, one on the back of the building and one on the side of the building with a big arrow pointing around to Pennsylvania Avenue, were not approved for various reasons. And that is my report.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Anybody present? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Shepley.
You are welcome.
Next is a report from the Cultural and Historic Affairs Committee. Ms. Olmstead.
Oh, he's very tall. Hope that stays. The Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee met on April 10 this month. And during that meeting, first of all, the committee was asked for volunteers to help out with the Seaside Craft Show that is held every year, the first Saturday in June, on the boardwalk here in Bethany Beach. And three members of the committee volunteered that they would help with marking of booths at 5:30 in the morning, which I think is most admirable. And one of the other committee members will be helping with the parking. During the winter, the Dinkerton Urban Museum is only open on Saturdays from 11 to 1, but beginning May 1 through October, it is, it will be open from 10 to 12 on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The committee reviewed a report, a visitor report from last year that showed that just during the summer months last year, over 400 people visited the museum. However, in October, there was a significant drop, so that at the end of this summer, we may review whether to keep the museum open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday during October or go back to Saturdays at the end of September. Elaine Fay, who is our museum director now, has provided a new kiosk in the Dinkerton Urban Museum that will be displaying items for sale there. We have note cards and a video of the memories of Bethany Beach by many people who have been associated with our town for many years. We now have coffee mugs, and hopefully soon we will have magnets, magnets to sell there also. We're also considering a PayPal point-of-service terminal that will help with purchases and will help in managing the inventory. An update was given on plans for Perrier Day, which is every year in the town of Bethany Beach on July 27. The host families will soon be meeting and will be contacting our French visitors. There will be 17 of them this year for a four-day visit. Our plans for a trip to Wallops Island with our visitors is progressing very well, as well as the reception and bandstand program that will be on Perrier Day, which this year is the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Perrier, which was on July 27 in 1944, the end of World War II. On Saturday, May 4, a special event titled Fun for the Roses will be held at the Dinkerton Urban Museum grounds in recognition of the second anniversary of the opening of our A few of the CHAC members have worked with Julie Maluski in putting this event together. The theme is going to be the Kentucky Derby and the history of horse racing in Delaware. A history display regarding the many roles that horses played before the automotive age is also being created. There will be activities for people of all ages and accompanied by the music of a barber shop quartet. So that is all I have for today, and CHAC will meet next on May 8 at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olmstead. Any questions? Anybody here, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Olmstead. The next item is report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, Mr. Himmman and Ms. Keel.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give you a brief update. We can get to the next chart, Will, if you don't mind. Always like to show our team members, extremely proud of the folks here. Everyone really pitches in, jumps in. Everyone's very busy, but really have demonstrated a tremendous amount of passion and energy for the topic of trying to keep our residents, guests, safe in various ways. So I'm really, really proud of this. What's really cool to look at this chart, actually, is see Chief Patrick Foley. That is, before that was sergeant, so that's really a cool thing. So I just want to give a special, really, literally, special thanks for all the people there because of their effort that Teresa and I have the pleasure of leading in this effort. So if we go to the next chart, we had a, and this was really the team's thoughts from last year when we did some planning, was to have a learning, sharing event that we hosted where we brought together communities that wanted to come in the early part of the year. We did it in March, I think it was 21. March, I think it was 21st, yeah, somewhere around there, last month. And Teresa will talk a little bit more about the folks who attended. But it was really voluntary, but it was a learning, sharing event so that the communities could get, start to share best practices about what's coming up, learn from what each other, and maybe spur some sort of creative thinking. So this was just sort of our, what our purpose and intent was. And if we go to the next chart, Will, please, thank you. This was actually the agenda we followed. We had six communities represented, and then we had Del Dot came and made a presentation, as well as the T2 group from the University of Delaware, Technology Transfer Group. So Teresa, why don't you speak to the communities? Because you really played a key role in bringing all of them together, so.
So we reached out to a variety of people in the area who focus on bicycle and pedestrian safety. And it turns out that almost all of the towns around here have groups that do this. It's important to all of us. It's part of the reason a lot of us live here is because it's such an easy place to walk and bike. So we had people from Lewis and Rehoboth and South Bethany. Fenwick and Dewey had conflicts. They weren't able to make it. But we also included Mariners Bethel Church, because they have a huge program where they give bikes to the J1 students to use every summer. And the North Bethany Coalition, which is a group of all of those communities between here and the bridge. And they've been working very closely with Del Dot to reduce the speed and add the flashing beacons here on Route 1. And if you're interested in that, there's a meeting on the 8th of May at the South Coastal Library. So if you're in favor of those, like many of us are, it would be good to show your support on that day. I think that's it.
Yeah, that's great. If we go to the next chart. So this is, we've again shared this. This is what we sort of have broken up into six major groups in terms of areas of focus. The Wave 2, the walking and biking, there's a lot of really fun stuff going. I'm just reading an email that came out earlier. They're going to focus messaging topics around J1 walkers, J1 workers, walkers, vacationers, drivers, experienced cyclists, and other possible topics. So that team is off and running with some really creative thinking. We're, on the second one, the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, we have, we're hoping to get the one on Ashwood installed in the springtime. We've approved 135,000 for that work, and we just need Del Dot to finish it off, so we're excited about that. Also looking at potentially another one on the north side of town. The Student Orientation Seminar is moving forward. Chief Foley is very passionate about that. The fourth areas around the workshop and surrounding communities, that's what we just had, very successful. We'll probably do that again next year. Maybe another community will jump up and take the lead, or maybe we'll do it. But we certainly enjoyed it, and I think got a lot of it, so we'll have another one, one way or another.
Yeah, not 10 o'clock on a Tuesday or a Thursday, because that seems to be the problem. Different day. We'll do a different day.
Okay. Message her, Teresa. The Bethany Beach app and newsletter, there's some work really that Julie has done and with others around that. That's really, we saw a briefing of that that I think is going to be a great additional tool to get the word out about what's going on. And obviously, the safety aspect will be part and parcel to that. So that's really exciting. And the last one is just around being able, have the opportunity to reach out and talk to community groups, hear what their issues and concerns are. And so we're always, if anyone's, you live in a community, smaller group, you want, would like one of our team to come, have a discussion with you, we would be more than glad to. So I think that's, anything else, Teresa?
Everything.
Okay. Mayor, others on the?
Anybody? Any questions? Anybody? Yes? Oh, please come to the microphone.
Oh, I bet you can hear me.
No, of course, this is being, this is being livestreamed. Oh, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. So there are a great many more electric bikes around. They are frequently, I'm sorry to say, on sidewalks. They're on the pedestrian bridge that connects Hawksbill Street, which is in the Turtle Wall community, with Collins, which is, you know, West Bethany. I don't know what the rules are, but I've been run down by at least one very quiet electric bike. There are also mopeds around. I just, if you could take those into consideration as you look at the blend of vehicles that are in the bikeways, I would appreciate it.
We have, thank you, first, we have looked at that. The, I wish Chief Foley was here because he could speak to the exact rules. It's very confusing. Like, it has to do with the speed of the bike, but we, it's on our list.
Right. So the, and as you spoke, you know, spoke to, the really challenge with those is twofold, right? One, they are typically going faster than a bike. You know, an electric bike will go faster. And it's extremely quiet. And, and so that can really create some challenges, even for the most alert pedestrian walker, whatever, in terms of hearing those coming up or even seeing them. So that's definitely one of our areas of focus that will be.
We should add it. We'll, we'll add it to the messaging, because some of this sounds like bicycle courtesy. Like, a bell would have been helpful there, right? So we can add that to the messaging.
Right. Thank, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Mickey. Thank you, Teresa.
Flood Committee.
The next item is a report from the Stormwater and Flood Committee. Mr. Kayla.
Thank you, Mayor. The Stormwater and Flood Committee, we had a recent meeting on Tuesday, the 9th, with all our committee members present. Our speaker that day was Ed Hale, University of Delaware Assistant Professor, and he spoke on UDL's Bay Aquaculture and Aquaponics, as well as several current studies to develop nature-based resilient shorelines for back bay and, and bayshore areas. Very interesting. Bob Collins, one of our committee members, and also a member of the Center for the Inland Bays, updated us on Denerec's Individual Living Shoreline Cost Share Program. Our Assistant Town Manager, Terry Teeman, she briefed us all on the status of the Assawoman and Loop Canal Steel Flapton project, the Loop Canal Bulkhead and Living Shoreline Project, Denerec's Shoreline Management Economic Study, and the efforts of ACT and our mayor, all the mayors of the coastal communities, and our legislators on reacting to this. Terry also briefed us on Del Dot's Route 1 initiative and on the USGS monitoring stations, which are currently, only one of them's in operation right now, but there's two more that will be set soon. Matt Kirk's updated us on the status of our bay homeowners' Help the Town Fight Flooding Effort. I'm sure you've all seen our pamphlets around town. And please pass them on to all your neighbors. It's good practices. It's very good practices. John Russell, another member of our committee, presented an example of individual property stormwater management ponds. We also advised of an upcoming meeting, which took place on Friday, the 12th, where the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers had a public presentation in Dewey on the current, currently proceeding Indian River inlet repairs, which are underway. I also quickly addressed a recent two-day Del Marva Waterways Tour, which I, Teresa Keel and I both took. Very interesting. And our meeting adjourned at 3:30. It was very well attended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keel. Any questions?
I have one comment. It's a little off-topic, but while Ron and I were on this tour, we met two women from Federalsburg, who every year go to the cottage tour here in Bethany.
How many were on that tour, about?
About 30.
Yeah.
From all over Del Marva?
From all over Del Marva.
That was good. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, please. Thank you.
Jen Carter, 429 Collins. Thank you for all of the attention to drainage and stormwater. Could you please, Mr. Gravier, say something about what's happening on Collins? It looks like it's a very positive thing with the drainage. Is that coming up? Do you want to save that?
We're not there yet.
As a topic?
Yep.
Okay. But it's, it's great.
Okay.
So if you could also, though, cover the holes when people are away, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kayla. The next item is a report from the Town Manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council?
No, there's no Fourth of, I'm sorry, there's no Fourth of July Parade Committee this month. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I apologize for the typos in my report, and I promise to do a better job next month, so.
Well, you do hard pecks, so.
Yeah, well, it's hard, especially when the fingers are fat, too. It's really difficult. We're moving ahead fairly quickly with converting the corner across the street in the Christian Church property to a pay-to-park parking lot. The contract to approve that is on this agenda within the next week or so. The fence will be up. The contract to, to let, will be let to do the necessary grading and stonework on the 25th, and the driveway will be revamped to come up to Del Dot standards to allow access to the, to the pay-to-park area. It's estimated if those spaces were utilized for a full period of time, from 10 to 11 p.m., those 68 spaces alone would generate roughly $328,000. Of course, none of our spaces are utilized like that throughout town. But we're looking, looking, I think, to, to have a good, a good return on our investment with the, with that pay-to-park area. And we are splitting the resources that we accrue in the pay-to-park area with the Christian Church, as, as is noted in the contract. Seasonal hiring is going very well. Joe Donley, our outstanding lifeguard captain, who's been doing this many years for us, has a great, great return of guards coming back to him, and he's also a great recruiter, probably because he's very actively recruits in the high school he works at here in Delaware. But great returning crew. He's filled his spots already. And last year, we had some significant issues trying to fill our seasonal police, police spots. We like to go to 17, 18, maybe 19, if we can find qualified candidates. And last year, we had eight. One attritioned out immediately, and we went through the summer with only seven seasonal police officers. This year, we have 14. If we had more time to put them through our hiring process, we probably would have hit 17, which is just a good sign for some, a lot of, lot of good work and good work from Sergeant Elliott, who does recruiting for the seasonal, the seasonal positions. Also, some good news, the church, for the first time, has offered to, to let us use a couple of the rooms in their, in their facility for seasonal employees. So two to three of our police officers who are looking for housing, seasonal police officers who are looking for housing, will be able to stay on their property. In what has taken a very, very long time, the Delaware Department of Transportation has finally approved our request to lower the speed limit on Route 26 within the corporate limits of Bethany Beach from 35 to 30 mile per hour. We are ordering signs. As soon as those signs are in, we will making the change. And when we do that, we'll be putting up two digital signs, eastbound and westbound, advising of the change in the speed limit. We'll leave them up for a couple of weeks. The police department will use some discretion again for a couple of weeks, but after that point in time, we'll be enforcing the 30 mile per hour change. We have talked, I have talked for many, many times in my managers' reports about livestreaming our bandstand performances. And first, we had to find 1,000 subscribers for our YouTube channel. That took a while. And then we've had a number of issues with the quality of the audio and visual production that we were trying to capture. We have resolved them, and this year, our shows will be live on the bandstand, which I think will, will be, will be fun for everyone. If you just want to stay home one time and not fight the crowds, I think it'd be a positive for, for, for the town. I want to thank a concerned citizen. A concerned citizen called us about the condition of the ramp to the beach at Ocean View Parkway. We took a look at it, and they were exactly right, Mayor Hardeman. And, and we're replacing all 320 feet of that, of that trail to the, to the beach. Last month, I mentioned that we had spent $5,500 to put a decoy eagle at the top of the water plant. I've included a picture in my report. The eagles routinely attack by the osprey that want to return to the nest there. The osprey, as you can see in the picture, keep on dropping the different sticks and branches to form their nest, but they haven't done it yet. And from the water plant tells me it's quite entertaining frequently, so. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Actually, I have one question. For the bandstand concerts, they will be livestreamed. Will they be, will they stay on the YouTube page, or you have to watch it live?
You know, I don't know how that works. I would assume that we'll have a site, and most things.
Kind of like these meetings, right?
Stay there, yes.
Yeah. Just curious. Thank you.
Oh, and just a commercial about that. If you want to order your meal from one of our downtown restaurants, go to our 15-minute parking spots, pick it up, and go home and watch the bandstand performance. I think our restaurants would appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. I think the next item on our agenda is Old Business. This is a second reading, an ordinance to amend Chapter 475, Property Management, Section 1, Drainage and Elevation Standards of the Bethany Beach Town Code by adding the words "may be required by the town." Mayor Hardeman.
Thank you, Mr. Kayla. That's Section 475-1. At the present time, the way it reads is that if you wanted to do anything to your property, moving around dirt at all, it would require an engineer's report. The town would require that. What the building inspector has pointed out, that that's not always something that is desirable, because sometimes people want to put plantings in or a portion of their yard with a garden or something. And the way this reads now, it would require them to get an engineer's report. So she had suggested that we just add "may be required by the town" so that if it was something where there was a new lot or a home being built, that would be the type of situation in which you would require one, not something where you're putting in tomatoes in your garden or moving things around like that. So that's the only change, the amendment to this particular regulation or the ordinance, just adding the words "may be required" and eliminating the "shall be required." So with that, make a motion that we approve the amendment to Section 475-1, Section B1 of the town ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Anybody in the audience?
Anybody in the audience have any comments? Okay. Can we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and consideration and a possible vote on the appointment of Tempe Steen to the Board of Adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Rich McHugh, which ended on October the 18th, which ends on October the 8th, 2025. Mayor Hardeman.
Thank you very much. As you know, with Mr. McHugh becoming a member of council, the Board of Adjustment is an independent body, and so he had to resign from that board. And he did a fine job, a great job while he was there. Thank you very much. And we have a very well-qualified person who has agreed to serve, and that is Tempe Steen. I think you, Tempe Steen needs no introduction in town. She's a fixture. She's been here for years. In addition to getting her teaching degree and doing that for a couple of years, she began, she went to law school and started practicing law in Sussex County. She had her own firm, Steen, Whaler, and Shrinna Fox. And during her legal career, she represented nine towns in southeast Sussex at various times. And at one, as a town attorney, she sat with the Board of Adjustment. In the remainder, as town attorney, she advised the Board of Adjustment and representing the boards in their very few appeals to the Superior Court. So she is very familiar with the work of the Board of Adjustment, and we're grateful to her for agreeing to serve, because this is something that's very important to the town and to all the residents. So I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Tempe Steen to the Board of Adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Mr. McHugh.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much, Tempe. Thank you very much, Tempe. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on the town's investment policy. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. The town of Bethany Beach invests funds with the highest priority being on preservation of principal, followed by liquidity and the return on investment. The town diversifies its investment by type, institution, and maturity date. Investments are restricted to two-year term, which is not a long time. We require collateralization agreements whenever account balances exceed the FDIC insurance amounts. Authorized investments types are U.S. government securities, certificates of deposits, money market accounts in commercial banks. The town investment policy and a list of investments are reviewed by this town council every April. I make a motion that we approve the investment policy as written for one more year.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Next item is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on the purchase of one Ford F-150 and two Ford Max E SUVs from Pacifico for the amount of $147,912. These vehicles will both be purchased through the Energize Delaware Grant and are fully funded by the grant. Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council. Thanks to the great work of Terry Timman, almost a year ago, we were awarded a grant for a little over $180,000 to purchase EVs for the town. Because of the cost of the EVs and availability, we have not been able to move forward with, with that purchase until this point in time. The contract you have before you is from a, a state-approved vendor off the state contract, and that is for one Ford F-150 for $56,397.12 and two Ford Mach E SUVs for $45,757 individually, for a total of $91,515, for a grand total of $147,912.72. The total cost of these vehicles have been covered by the grant. With these, we'll be installing two Level 2 EV charging stations here at Town Hall and one Level 3 in, in the public works yard. So a motion, Mayor, Council, if you would.
Anyone want to move that? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Gravier. And the next item is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on budget supplement for the Mumford and Miller Collins Street Pathway Project. Mr. Gravier.
This is an unusual request, and we're doing it in order to stay in compliance with the grant that we received that we're using to construct the Collins Street corridor project. Instead of bringing change orders in and approving change orders on an individual basis, which then invokes a very complicated process in administering the grant, our fiscal director has asked for an overall supplement of $100,000 to cover any overages that occur during the contract. We'll still bring overages in for council consideration, but one supplement to cover makes her administration of the grant much easier. That's why the supplement is here.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Cliff, I assume that the vendor won't know about this?
Yes.
So it won't give him an opportunity to fleece us?
Well, I think any project like this does have some sort of an overage, and I think we're comfortable with the vendor. We didn't do this immediately, we, we had some experience to date with them and comfortable that anything he brings to us will be valid. Right now, there's the potential for a $40,000 charge to an upgrade for drainage on the project, which was considered after the project was designed to meet concerns of the neighbors in the area regarding drainage. So it's, it's that type of.
But this is still part of the grant money.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, you can.
Thank you. Is this, may I speak on things Collins Street?
Collins Street.
Okay.
And it's about the drainage?
The drainage is beginning to happen, the drainage part of the project, I guess. But we're looking at the chart, so that's what we're trying to understand. I had requested that the, just two or three sentences go with that email that we received with the chart of what's happening every week, or for three weeks. This one is for three weeks. And there really isn't anything. So I was looking at Monday, and it's listed as the 20th. So I believe your calendar needs to be updated, so that, you know, today is the 19th, and the dates on the calendar, on the chart are incorrect. So if those could be updated also, that would be great. It has milling, this is, all goes together, so the milling is happening on Monday, but then there's no continuation of the milling. So are we to assume, again, without some little explanation, that the milling will be done and finished on Monday, and the street will be left milled for three weeks or more? Or is, or am I, are we misunderstanding the chart?
I don't have the chart in front of me, and this is, item on the agenda deals with the budget supplement.
Thank you, then I guess I'll sit down, right, Mr. Gravier?
That's, that's.
So I don't know what you'd like, when you'd like me to address some things. You tell me, it's okay. I want to be in order.
Oh, that, but she had the question about it, so I, it was my.
So, Mayor, so I don't have the chart in front of me, I, I can't speak to it, I'm sorry.
Is that the one that went out today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's very difficult to understand, that's why I requested just a couple of sentences. You know, no big paragraph.
Okay.
Just.
We'll take a look at that then.
What is the D? I don't know what the D is on the chart, it's on the individual. And I'm sorry, I didn't request that it come up, so.
There is a legend on the chart.
The D stands for day work.
Day work.
That's why they're all D.
Okay. They're all D, okay.
So the colors tell you what the work is.
Okay.
And D just stands for day work.
Did anybody take a look at it, though, today, or before it went out?
I looked at it very quickly today, I think the color also tells you whether it's Wellington or Collins.
Right, it's delineated, that's delineated, but it's, anyway.
So it could be the same legend, but in a different color. Talking about the same one.
They'll have to update the schedule, and it'll need to be resented.
Yeah.
Right.
So the chart, as I look at it, goes Sunday, the 19th, Monday, the 20th. The weekend is omitted.
But today is the 19th, and tomorrow is the 20th, not Monday, the 20th, is my point. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think, I think they have the Monday through Friday right, they just have the dates wrong.
Yeah.
They need to adjust it.
That's all, that's all. May I mention anything else about Collins, or no? Can we just sit and come back, or what would you like?
And on, on the, the chart is a legend that explains D is for day work.
Yes.
It's, all that is on the chart.
Yes. But again, milling is happening on Monday, and it looks like it's done, like it's, the whole street will be done from Kent to Ocean, what is it? What is it, I keep on saying double bridges, the one loop. Half moon.
So our project is Wellington and Collins, the state is doing Kent.
Right.
Right.
But I'm saying, so on the chart, so that chart only, we're trying to put it together. The chart is from Mumford, so that, that is Collins, right? So from Kent to the, the loop one. I always forget.
Half moon.
I don't know why I can't remember that.
It's half moon.
Right, thank you. I never can remember it. So, but it's showing that, like, Collins Street, that it goes that far. So it's like, it's going to be one and done on Monday, and then we'll have to deal with the milled road, like we did on Kent, for weeks. I mean, that's what I'm trying, we're trying to understand. We have children, we have, you know, on the street.
The, the road will be milled. After the milling, there'll be some cutout of the road, the road will be filled with stone, and then the road will be blacktopped. That, that's the process, I, I can't.
That's great.
I can't speak to how long the road will remain milled. The project is supposed to be over by May 15th. We're comfortable that if we build in the rain days we've already had, that, that the project will be fairly well on time.
Okay, one last thing, I promise. At Collins, where it meets Kent, right now is just horrendous. I don't have an SUV, and I have to go like two miles an hour over it. There's a big drop-off also where the path is going to be. Can something be done, like steel plates or something, so that we're not bumping over that?
So there's new, the state paved Kent, and they milled where the path will go, and there is a dip there.
It's heavy.
Maybe they can ramp it temporarily, like throw some asphalt down and ramp it or something?
They're out today filling different holes with stone and taking care of issues like this for people with individual issues with their driveways also.
But this is an individual, so could this be on a list for soon? Because it's Friday, and it's, it's been this way, and it's, it's very disruptive for my car. Smaller cars, not SUVs.
As soon as I leave, we'll see what we can do about it.
I appreciate that a lot. And as far as the eagle on that, you got me, because the false eagle, unless the eagle came and sat there the other day, because I think it's gone. So I don't know whether on the water tower.
Well, we, we took, we took some aerial shots with our drone here just two days ago, it was still there, so.
Right. I'll look like a hawk. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor, anyone have any comments on the proposal before we vote on it? Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second regarding the budget supplement for the Mumford and Miller Collins Street Pathway Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Gravier. The next item is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a contract to lease property on the southwest corner of the Christian Church for a public parking area. Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council, you have the contract in your packet, I spoke to, a little bit about it earlier. This is a contract for two years with the church. The church requested a two-year contract so they could get a feel for whether or not they would be happy long-term with the project staying on their property. There is a typo under Definitions in A, so it's Garfield Parkway and west of Delaware Route 1, it should be east of Delaware Route 1, for your consideration.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could you just describe a little bit of the, what the contract involves?
The contract allows us to develop the property on the corner, it's roughly 200 feet long, parallel to Garfield Parkway. And we'll be able to install 68 individual pay-to-park places there. The property will be fenced, the parking area will be fenced. There'll be a stone drive around, and right now, we'll be parking on the grass, hopefully over some type of a GeoGrid. Our arrangement with the church is that we are going to profit-share 50/50 with any revenue generated from the pay station that will be installed in the parking area.
And is it open just certain times of the year?
It's only open during the parking season, yes.
Okay, thank you. I did that for the benefit of people here. Just for your information, if anyone wants to know, have copies of what the, the council is considering, they're all posted on the website, along with the agenda, every time there's a meeting, usually a week in advance, so give you an opportunity to review it. Mr. Frye?
I volunteer to help with the parking for the craft fair on June 1st. Is this going to affect that?
It, it may, but we'll try to work to accommodate it either with the Blue Crab Lot or whatever we have to do to, to, to move forward with this, though.
Who, who do I talk to about that?
Brett.
Brett, okay.
Mr. Gravier, we have the parking equipment, right? That's, that's been received? The parking equipment that will go in this new lot?
The pay station, yes, yes.
Any discussion?
I have another question here. Cliff, this is a two-year agreement.
Yes.
If they decide at the end of two years, I assume we're responsible for returning it to its original condition?
Yes, as stated in the contract.
But it's an evergreen agreement, right, after two years?
Yes.
So this, it's not so much a question, but just a comment. Cliff, I, I guess, just speaks to, you know, this is something that I know we've been talking about, looking at for a while. And we've been persistent, and it takes two parties to make this work, so thanks for continuing to move it forward. So hopefully, we end up with 70 more spots, and that helps a little bit, so thank you.
It's, it's an ongoing battle for the town to maintain pay-to-park spaces with development, new driveways, bike racks, so on and so forth. So they're constantly whittled away. This is close to the business area, the business community is always concerned about pay-to-park spots. We lost a few when we did our Streetscape project many years ago. We've restored them with what we've done on North Pennsylvania Avenue and the Blue Crab Lot, and this is a, a good addition, I think, with, especially for the business community.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. Yes.
I'd also just like to add, I think this is a win-win-win situation. We get complaints all summer long about the lack of parking. This is going to add 68 more spaces, parking spaces, and it's going to generate some type of revenue for both the church and the town. I see this as a win-win-win.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Shepley. All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor of approving the contract to lease the property on the southwest corner of the Christian Church for a public parking area, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you again, Mr. Gravier. Discussion, next item is the discussion, consideration, and possible vote on adding a $50 special events vendor fee to the schedule of fees. Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, we routinely issue special event permits for a variety of different functions. For instance, Defibos is having, or has had their anniversary celebration in their parking lot. We have the Bike to the Bay functions and 5K races, and sometimes the people that put the special events on want to bring in a vending truck or have vending, or vend some other type of product. We have not had a real way, way to control that outside of asking the individual business owner with the truck to obtain a full year-round business license for $250-plus. This allows us to just charge a $50 fee to any vendor who's participating in a special event. It requires the person who's putting the event on to tell us who the vendor is, what product they'll be vending, and it's a one-time fee for a one-time event.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Cliff, this is just for the vendors, this is not for the people that are putting on the event.
No, they, they, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from anyone?
Obviously, the first thing, Jen Carter, that came to mind was like, things like the, like the craft fair and the boardwalk show and things like that, so that's excluded, right? Anything that's within an event, like that, like individual vendors within.
The craft show is a town event, so we would not be charging the individual vendors this type of a fee. The, the art show.
September.
We put on in conjunction with the chamber, again, that wouldn't be affecting.
Terrific, just wanted that out there.
And Jen, we also confirm the farmer's market is not part of that either.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion on the floor in a second to, to add a $50 special events vendor fee to the schedule of fees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. And the final item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a Keystone Engineering contract for $150,000 for an information system upgrade for the water plant. Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council, this is a sole-source contract. Keystone Engineering has administered the town's information system at the water plant since 2018, 2019, after a vendor selection process. This is a needed upgrade to the information system for the water plant. We treat our water and do a number of different things to our, our water to make it potable, since we pull from deep aquifers. We don't have issues with contamination, chemical contamination, but we do pull up a lot of minerals from the water that necessitate some unusual types of treatment. But again, everything within the realm of what's normal. This system is necessary to administer the pipes, the pumps, and the treatment of the, of the plant, and again, a, a sole-source bid.
Thank you, Mr. Gravier, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept a, or approve a contract to, with Keystone Engineering for $150,000 for an information systems upgrade for the water plant.
I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, Cliff, as a clarification, my understanding is that the system we have today is not only obsolete, but you can't, we can't even get spare parts. We've tried to even cannibalize, try to buy old parts and cannibalize. This is going to replace all that, is that correct?
Whenever, this is a very popular system in water treatment throughout America. When the company announced they were going to no longer support the product, there was a massive buyout of all their parts and all their duplicates. a massive buyout of all their parts and all their duplicate systems. So there is not equipment available or updates to the software available at this point in time.
Right, so that, we're getting rid of that and having a new, brand-new system.
Yes.
And Cliff, this includes hardware and software.
And software. And the install.
Any more questions?
This question.
I think it's all of the original contract that you awarded, the acquisition you mentioned earlier. Would you say?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Do you have a phone? Thank you.
I just wondered, is this within scope of the original contract that you awarded? Does the statement of work associated with that include these tasks specifically with good acceptance criteria?
What contract did I mention earlier that related to the water plant?
You said there was a full and open acquisition that enabled the town to award this contract, to which you're adding 150K.
No, I said there was, in 2018, 2019, the, the town went through a process to select a vendor to provide this service to the town. So to provide.
Didn't that result in a contract?
It resulted in a, in a maintenance contract that we've maintained with the company.